You would think, but. I will charge him for everything I do.
The market's turned around today, Myron. We were down 400 points yesterday. I don't know what they're doing now.
All right. Good morning, everyone. It is 9:00 AM. I'm going to call this meeting of the Cuddington County Board of Commissioners to order. It's Tuesday, April 12, 2022. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance. And Andrew, would you lead us today?
I believe in America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. If you have a cellphone, if you would silence it, if you need to take a call, if you'd step out in the rotunda to do so, and we are streaming live on YouTube. Item number two, call for public comment. We will still take comments from the individuals. If they want to call in, the two phone numbers are 605-882-6248 or 605-882-6297, and we will address those during the open part of our meeting. Item number three, conflict of interest items. Are there any fellow commissioners on the agenda?
No.
No.
All right. Item number four, action to approve the April 12, 2022 agenda.
So moved.
Motion by Van Dusen, second by Gable. On favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, that motion carries. Item number five, action to approve the March 29, 2022 minutes of the Cuddington County Board of Commissioners. Motion by Johnson, second by Waterman. Any additions or corrections? Hearing none. On favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, that motion carries. We'll move on to monthly reports. We'll start with the Veteran Service Officer, Todd.
Morning, Tom.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Oh, these are updated.
Oh.
All right.
Really, really appreciate my quick.
Yeah. Anyway, in the Veteran Service Office world here, we had one DAB transport for March, coordinated one return trip from the VA using the new Community Transit Rides for Wellness Program that worked really nice. And I had a veteran that was down there called back looking for a ride. We were able to, they were going down that day. We were able to work that out. So that was pretty slick. I liked that. So as far as the van, the ongoing saga here is that the, it's there. They're waiting on the license plate and the credit card from that standpoint. So bear with me. I wish I could do anything, but I can't. So. Business has been steady to increasing as I start my second year as the VSO for the county. Again, I hope to establish some type of a better outreach program, but until things really slow down as far as the walk-ins and the phone calls, I mean, I just, I got plenty of things to do with really going out and feeding the street for more. And it's a bad thing, but hopefully we move forward here and we get the other VSO online that trained. And also with the COVID, the clinician hopes itself at least up as far as. Seven April of '22, I was able to give a presentation to the Watertown River Club. There was about 30 to 40 attendees there. I'm also scheduled for, to go to La Moa meeting this, this month, at the end of this month, and give a presentation to them. From that standpoint, I'll probably, a lot of the community organizations, veterans organizations are going through their selection process and their collection of officers and stuff like that. So I'll probably be out there this month and next month to try to get to all of them meetings and meet the new commanders and stuff like that. Just a quick blurb on just a little educational fact here is that the flat bronze, you know, we get, the VA does provide a headstone or a flat bronze for a small grant for eligible veterans. The flat bronze is a 12 by 24, and the most common requested, this can be mounted on a private headstone or be flush mounted on the ground at the head of a Florida veteran. There is a setting fee to the family, but the state also has a $100 state reimbursement fee that we can apply for. It takes about four to eight weeks for them to arrive once they're back out of our office. We currently have 24 that are out to be set. So we also have, then we'll submit, we can't submit for the $100 reimbursement until they've been set, and we've been notified by whoever sets that. So we know where the exact locations. When we submit that into the state, they get that. We currently have 21 on order and four standing in process. Future, attend Vietnam Veteran Recognition Ceremony by Representative Dusty Johnson at the Veterans Park at Lake Pesca on the night next week, 19 April, 1300. This is a program that his office does. It's kind of an impromptu or very small thing. They started off with about, I talked with her, his representative in Aberdeen, Andrea up there. She's told me about it. I put it out to the VVA. It's kind of circulated within the VPA, Vietnam Veterans Association community. Probably be a pretty good showing. We probably added, I don't know, six or seven additional veterans to possibly get the pin from that standpoint. It's a rare piece of process to nominate somebody to get this pin. You can go right on to Dusty Johnson's website. There's an application right there. It's a very generic, basically anybody that had served during that time should be eligible, or they can call Dusty Johnson's office. Plan to conduct the interview is 20 and 21 April for the Deputy Veteran Service Office position this coming week. Currently, we have about 10 different applications that will be interviewed, applicants that we will be interviewing. Also been working with Sarah there in the Welfare Office. I sat through a meeting there with one of the program personnel for the Network of Care. And talking with Sarah, I'm going to need to sign a memorandum of understanding for me to be in the Network of Care. And I have not read it all. She told me convention it. And once I get a little bit of time here, I've got a couple of months to read through it, but basically it's my memorandum of understanding using the previous. Many one-day conferences coming up and bookings. I think it's 12th or 13th, around that timeframe with the South Dakota Department of Veterans Affairs. So other than that, any questions?
I have a question, but I would make a comment. You did a very good presentation at Rotary. So very informative. So thank you for that.
Thank you.
All right. All right. We will move on. We're gonna let Cindy give hers next week, and we'll do Director of Equalization with Shawna. Good morning, Shawna.
Morning, Shawna.
You ready for a long day?
We are currently still feeling phone calls. Some people are still coming in asking about assessments, tax bills. Tax bills are due by the end of this month. So we have quite a few people looking at that and then asking questions. We do have our board hearings this afternoon and this evening. We only have three appellants this afternoon and five this evening. We should be done unless something happens. In the meantime, we should be able to, you know, approve both boards. And then right now, our grazers are getting ready to start our summer reappraisal, which is going to be Fuller, Dexter, and German hometowns. We'll start, they're just about ready, so we'll start as soon as the weather kind of allows.
That one, today is at 1:00 this afternoon, right?
Yep, 1:00 this afternoon.
6:30 PM for the rest. At City Hall.
Yes.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All right. Very good. Thank you, Shawna. All right. So let's move on then to the Welfare Director with Sarah. Good morning, Sarah.
Good morning.
Morning, Sarah. You have a guest with you?
Yes. Jayden, who is our intern.
Say, introduce her. Yeah. Jayden.
Yep, Jayden Watt, right?
Jayden, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so she's with us for 30 hours a week for the next five weeks.
Hey, attention, Jayden. There's a test when we get done.
She's actually with the HST.
HST, okay.
Yeah.
It goes both ways, right?
Yeah, she dropped out of us in the fall.
Great.
Very good.
Good to have you.
Yes. Here is my report.
Thank you.
41, we did a draw in March. I don't know that there's anything that really stands out from all of that. ICAP has been able to pick up some more case management, so that ten has increased.
Thank you. Here we go. Okay. Any questions about that? Report?
So, um, just, I know it's small.
I know it is small.
On the, yeah, we need to work on. I'm part of this.
Yeah.
Part of it. The, uh, the homeless number on there, understand the burial, that's always gonna be the highest, but the homeless, is that, can you just, I know it's a small amount, but what is that 1,072?
So that is the people that come in and tell us that they don't have anywhere to go, like that.
So is that the apartment? That's not the apartment?
No, it's not the apartment necessarily. It's just random people. The apartment is one of the places we're able to put them when they come in, but otherwise we help, try to help looking for other options too.
So, yeah, um, some of, sometimes it might be hotel or some of the other connections that we have. Yeah, yeah.
The CARES, CARES number was up. Yeah, Carrie was busy with CARES, but she's getting them processed, so that's been good. So of that number, would you say some of those are repeat, like month to month, unlikely? Okay. Yeah, she's in the phase now where she is approving for a second and third round times for when they qualify for that. And we're seeing that come through as pass through dollars of. Yeah, we, there's been a lot of money come through for that. Yeah. We did have three funerals last month again too. So that seems February, we didn't have any, and then March we had three again. Approved. We do currently have a couple that's staying in the apartment. She's pregnant, and so we're trying to help them find permanent housing before she has the baby. There's a hole with that, helping with job placement right now and some income resources so that they can afford long-term with that. We have a meeting next week with brothers and sisters behind bars and ICAP to discuss the future plans on the apartment and what options that we have for our community with that. I'm not sure where it's, really not sure where we're gonna go with it, but. So they have that one house, and it's for women only. You know, if they have openings in there, maybe it's a possibility of being able to place someone in there for short term. I don't know how that would work though. Yeah, there, they have guidelines that they, they follow for who they place there, and that's a program that they have. So they're really, they want to get the right fit in there because it really is, they want people to be successful in there. But yeah. Because this would be a short-term thing, and they kind of have. Yeah, that's more of a transitional housing piece than what the emergency housing is. Yeah, I just thought it was a pinch. Yeah, yeah. We certainly explore all the options. So the budget and guesthouse closing down has created another issue for our community as far as not having those emergency locations for people to go. So yeah, it's a need. For CARES for March care, it was a 100 hours, which was $5,000 in administrative fees for going back to the county that where we were reimbursed. Again, Hunter has increased the case management, and you can see that's reflected with the homeless individuals and that kind of thing, just those needs. So 63 hours for her case management, and she, we've also been getting more referrals from the jail again to help people that are currently in jail have discharge or release plans with that. As far as our office itself, we have been anxiously awaiting the Network of Care, getting our software up. We have one more meeting to build our software, and then from there, I'm hoping we'll be ready to do the training and then implementation. So hopefully, I keep hoping, that was, it was supposed to be March, now April, and now hopefully by May we'll have that in, but. Part of it was the whole insurance thing too. So that was a little bit of a holdup. Yeah, that held it up. And now they're, they're making some changes, it, changes in it for our new Community Care Coordinator, so that she'll be able to use it appropriately. So they have to adapt some of it for that too. But it should be, it should really meet our needs in our office with that. For the Community Care Coordinator, so she did start, we went to Sioux Falls and met with them regarding their jail reentry program, and she's been developing a flow chart as well as a logic model for how that program will look and, and what exactly it will look like, so we can have all the pieces in place when she is up and going. I'm hoping that we can meet with the Detention Center and the State's Attorney again next week, and the sheriff, and kind of start going, getting her clients and moving forward with that. We, she will need a work cellphone, and it's just, that's just really a safety thing. We don't want clients calling her on our personal phone, and she'll be out in the community. And so I did contact VAST. It's the same contract or the same, that's who the sheriff goes through. And so I contacted them, and that would be $50 a month. It is covered under the grant, and so we'll, we'll need to move forward with that if there, as long as that's okay with that. And then office space, we are very tight on top of each other in our office right now, especially adding both the Community Care Coordinator and now an intern. We, we're using all the spaces. And so we're looking into options. We have toured a few, and Steve with Facilities Management is now working on talking to some people and seeing what actions we have for moving forward with that. So hopefully we'll be able to line something up in the near future. The South Dakota Association of County Welfare Officials, we have our conference tomorrow and Thursday. I'll be going to hear on for that conference, so I'll be out tomorrow and Thursday for that. And yeah, have that all planned and ready to go. Our intern did start this week. She hit the ball, or hit the ground running. She's already been calling around. We're looking into what landlords and things there are, both for us to be able to help clients connect with landlords, but then also just to gather some information about what rental units we have in our community. So she was dumped right in into work lab to have her be able to do some of those things with that. And we'll be, she'll be having some other projects like that for information purposes and resource purposes for the community. One of the questions I needed to just get some input on is, we had a request from a funeral home to pay the traditional rate if they do a traditional fair funeral followed by cremation. In the past, it's been, if there is any cremation, if, if there's cremation at all, we pay the cremation rate. However, the funeral homes have said over and over that if they do the traditional, they have all the costs of the traditional, they do the traditional service, and then they just don't do burial, they do cremation instead. So what the request is, is that if they do the traditional service, that we would pay the traditional rate versus the cremation rate in our policy. I mean.
There's just two options, basically, that are in between that.
Right, right. I, I mean, my recommendation would be in the future that we go to one rate, and so that we don't have two different rates. A lot of different counties have just one funeral rate. That's not what we have right now. We have two different rates, and so I guess I'm just looking for some guidance on that. The cost of the cremation is less than the traditional. Right, right. So who covers that? So if we would do the traditional, who covers the cost of the cremation then? Well, that's part of the, that's part, that's the cost.
It's one or the other. So a burial-type funeral versus a cremation-type funeral. And so, but if you do kind of a combination where you do the full, everything but the burial, yeah, and then you cremate instead of bury, then. But I guess the question I would have is, is there a difference in overall cost between the two? I mean, does, the component of, I mean, this is kind of strange to talk about, but.
The cremation is, I think, seven thousand.
Well.
I mean, just the actual cost incurred, I guess, I'm wondering about the cost structure, you know, how, how we came up with the, the price in the first place, which might be more detailed than we want to get into, but you know, I, I, I'm open to what your recommendations might be.
I think we're still one of the highest paying counties in the state for funeral expenses, so.
Yeah. What would be the cost? So the cremation, if we pay cremation, it's 2,575 for cremation. Opening and closing of the grave is 565. Typically, if they do a traditional service and then cremation, they don't have the opening and closing of the grave. And so the traditional funeral is 3,952. So then you add those two together, basically you add, add the cremation and then the. No, it would be one or the other. Okay.
So this, this, does the full funeral price include the opening and closing of the grave?
No.
Okay, that's, so, okay.
So it would, yeah. Oh, yes, sorry. Yeah. So it would be if, and sometimes if we do, if the family, that's where we look back, what the family's resources are. If they have any resources, they are expected to help with the opening and closing of the grave. A lot of times they don't even have enough resources for that, and so that ends up coming out of the county too. So there's really three different rates, the cremation rate, the traditional rate, and then the opening and closing. And if they do any burial, they have the opening and closing on top of either of them.
And that, the number was one again.
So the, with the opening and closing is 565. So.
Add that on to the traditional.
3952.
Do we need to pay for the opening and closing typically, roughly? I mean, would half, half, half the time or?
Yeah, it's, I, I can't, I actually can't. I don't want to.
Okay, that's fine, that's fine.
Yeah. So if we do the traditional, and then they do the cremation, we take off that 565, right? So if we would do the traditional, what would that cost? So the traditional is three, 3,952, and it would save us then the 565. So that would be on top of that, right? Right. Otherwise, it's 2,000, what for the cremation? 575.
The traditional includes opening and closing, right?
No, we have that on top.
That's on top of it, yeah.
Because that goes to the cemetery.
We've had, there's some requests that they've had to have a traditional and then cremation.
Yeah. That's becoming more common, I think.
Then they don't have the opening and closing of the grave.
Right.
So we would be better just to switch to the one where it's the traditional and then the cremation. Or what, so what a lot of counties do is they just have one rate and kind of a meet-in-the-middle rate, blanket rate for funeral costs. And so you don't have to worry about cremation versus.
Does Sioux Falls only pay for cremation?
No, cremation, Sioux Falls does do both. But yeah.
Both?
If they have, if there is a cremation at all, they only pay the cremation rate. It doesn't, regardless of if they have a traditional funeral.
Which is kind of what we do.
Right, that's been what we've done.
You go, can you, maybe think about it a bit more, come back with a recommendation on, you know, if there, if we need to change the policy or not, and then.
Okay, I just wanted some direction if, like, look at that. Okay. Maybe get some of those other counties, what they charge when they do just one. Okay. And then.
Funeral home and the press is not that happy with what they've been getting, so.
No, but again, Watertown or Cuddington County does pay one of the higher funeral reimbursements. Funeral homes lose money across the board for that, but we do pay one of the higher rates. So. Okay, just get us some more information, and we'll take a look at that. Okay, next month I'll bring that back. Yeah, that's good. Yeah. Another thing is, we do have in our policies that we will help with fuel. If people need help with gas, typically it's just been a gas voucher, and we send them to the Salvation Army. Salvation Army has informed us that they really only help with medical appointments. And so we do have the situations where people get, get released from jail rather than getting a bus ticket. If they have somebody that could come and show proof of insurance and a valid ID, we could just give them money for gas rather than paying for a bus ticket, but we don't have any provider for the gas. And so Carrie had suggested we look at Sioux Valley Co-op, doing a contract with them for, so that if we have somebody that would need, need gas, that we would have a, a business we could go to to get them that fuel. And so just wanted to run that by you, if we should look into an agreement with Sioux Valley Co-op. That's, that's who Salvation Army.
Would that be a contract that would have to be established at the beginning of the year then? Like the rest of our contracts? Have to bid it, right?
We already have a bid agreement with Sioux Valley for the Highway Department. I don't know who it extends to the Welfare Department or not. You have to talk to Sioux Valley. I'm not sure.
Because he, Rick puts in the gallons that he needs, so that would be something. I mean, he only contracts the gallons that he's figured that he needs.
Yeah, I mean, the rest of the, there are departments that have Sioux Valley gas cards for their, for the county vehicles that they have to drive, but this would be something entirely different.
Yeah, because you wouldn't. So what are they doing now? So that's what, we haven't not had to use it. So Salvation Army has a contract with Sioux Valley Co-op or the card or whatever, because we, we have not had to use it in the event that we need to use it. I'd like to have an option ready to go. And so Sioux Valley, Salvation Army just has that contract, so if somebody needs gas, they can contact, have that and, and bill. So maybe get that contract and send it, so we can work it over.
Yeah, and then, yeah, yeah, I guess potentially you might have to bid it in all that business too, but it wouldn't be, it would be a learning.
Yeah, because we.
The rules, I don't know.
I don't know how much the contract.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, I'll find out more from Salvation Army.
It would be, it's like if we could just add it on to the contract that we have.
Yeah, you would get a better rate.
Yeah.
Probably looking at that much more than, pretty minimal, probably.
Like, yeah, I mean, we haven't had to use it, and I even considered when we redo the policies, taking it off because we haven't had to, but it is in our policy, so we need to have an option. And since if they're maybe gonna freeze out of it, then otherwise people have been doing that. Yeah, yeah. So, yeah, and they are still covering medical appointments. They just don't have a big amount, so that, that's what we need to be prepared for that. As far as the system of care, we have our interagency meeting this Thursday afternoon at two, and we're really gonna focus on the networking, so we won't have a speaker. Everybody will just be able to share what their services are, strategic planning. We meet this afternoon, and so this is the third meeting, the final in-person, the plan, it's a planned final in-person meeting where we will work on developing working groups and moving, getting our actual strategic plan in place with that. So the action plan there. The Network of Care is meeting with people. You heard Todd say that they've been contacting the other agencies to do that. And then the resilient communities were continuing to focus on that adverse childhood experiences training and getting that information out for their, that. We have another training for ACES tomorrow, the Adverse Childhood Experience Training tomorrow, and there's 48 people registered for that tomorrow.
Is there still space on that?
Yes. Yeah. So yeah, if anybody's interested in that, they can still register for that. You can contact myself, and I can get that information there. There is a QR code. If you have that information, then you can get the QR code for that registration. It's gonna be at Lake Area Tech because April is Childbirth Prevention Month. We, we're trying to get a larger crowd there for that, and so we have a bigger facility prepared for that. Right, 48 is a pretty good number. Yeah, yeah, that's a great number.
What time, 11 or 10?
10 to noon. Yep.
That's good. Good stuff.
Question on, on the cellphone for the.
Yeah.
The Care, Community Care Coordinator. Do we, is that something we have to take action on, or, okay, since it's all wrapped up in, okay, good.
Did you look at that phone option with the card? It's more expensive. Yeah, yeah. This'll be a free phone and $50 a month. All right. Very good.
Covered by the grant.
Yes. Yep.
It's even better.
All good. Yes, all been approved, so, okay.
Okay.
Good, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we'll move on then to opening and announcement of bids for the Car House ripping project, Steve.
Two minutes that we have.
We want to hold that?
Till 9:30, just in case somebody else.
I didn't see the time on there, so I didn't.
Yeah.
Move on to eight.
We're good. Okay, let's just move on then to item number eight, action to approve auditor's account with treasure and note monthly registered deeds fees.
The auditor's account is there in front of you. First page shows you where the money that was on hand is of the last day of March. The second page shows you the cash fund balances and the registered deeds fees collected in the month of March for $40,149.55.
Move to approve.
Motion by Van Dusen.
Second.
Second by Waterman. Any questions, comments? Not hearing any. On, on favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, that motion carries. Should we go ahead and move on to 9:29? Item number nine, action to approve a resolution.
Item number nine, actions to approve a resolution to combine voting precincts for the twenty-twenty-two June primary election.
And this is a resolution that we did also two years ago, because there are only two ballot faces for this election, the Republicans had a primary election in Coddington County, and then there's a nonpartisan ballot, the Democratic Party does not have a primary this June, so my intent is to combine these precincts to save on election workers and to keep them busy, if we use our normal election workers, they just would not be busy enough based on the flow of voters that I anticipate coming up.
So, looking for a motion to approve that resolution.
Make the motion to approve.
Motion by Van Dusen, second by Gable, any comments or questions about that? Not hearing any, on favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that motion carries.
Ready for bids.
All right, let's go back then to item number seven, opening and announcement of bids for courthouse ripping project. Good morning. Just state your name and, Steve.
Yeah, push your buttons.
Right. And then if you would just state your name, please, and well.
Do you want to have that to Steve?
Yes. Uh, I'm Tom Squares with the Center Art Group, I'm the architectural director for this project.
Okay.
Thank you.
Who's the first one?
Oh. Do you have? All right, first one is from Guarantee Roofing and Sheet Metal of South Dakota, they're from Sioux Falls. We have four sheets. No, sorry.
It's okay.
And bond. You have the bid security. But I, I'm, I'm putting, I'm, I'm, it's, yeah, people to see. Um, I'm guarantee one hundred and four thousand, six hundred and ninety-five dollars, and what is this down here? Guaranteed award. It's the bid bond guarantee. Acknowledged, addendum number one. Should be all they have in there. Yep. Second one is from Protect Roofing and Sheet Metal.
So it was one hundred and four thousand, six ninety-five, for, okay.
And they did acknowledge a depth of one?
Yes, yep, and it had a ten percent.
I'm sorry, Steve, who did you say that was?
Protect Roofing.
Protect, okay.
Well, more, um, sorry, hopefully they cover up the microphone too much, Cindy. All right. The document. Um, one hundred and forty-six thousand, eight hundred and eighty dollars. Fit bond of one thousand, eight hundred and twenty-four dollars.
And they know it's the addendum?
Yes.
Yes.
They also have insurance.
Okay, um, we will take a look at these and see if they need all the specs that.
Okay, so you just had the two, all right. Uh, do you expect to be able to do that by the end of the meeting, or?
I know we set it for next week.
Today's just opening.
We put it, we put it in there.
Put it on next.
So we don't need to take any action.
Very good.
And I will send a form of intent to you as well, to you guys, if you have a copy, that will split my recommendation. Thank you again.
Great, thank you very much. Appreciate it.
All right. Um, item number ten, note the board will meet is the County Board of Equalization at one PM, April twelfth, today at the courthouse. And also note that the board will meet as a consolidated board of equalization at six thirty PM, April twelfth, this evening, in the chambers of the Watertown City Council. Item number twelve, action to approve abatement applications.
Fair enough today.
Okay, um, claims for payment, we have some of those.
Uh, the claims today, claims to the county are six hundred and twenty-eight thousand, eight hundred and one dollars and eighty-six cents. The pass-through to the state of South Dakota, six hundred and fifty-five thousand, three hundred and twenty-nine dollars and ninety-three cents. Does anybody have any questions after we'll get these over?
I, I do, I marked it here, I gotta find the mark. I just didn't know what it was. SDPAA, what is that?
That's the South Dakota Public Assurance Alliance, that is our general liability and auto.
I thought that's what it was.
Yes, yep, and which department are you looking at?
Commissioners, you're looking at the commissioners one at the top.
Well, mine's looking at a different.
Yeah, the twenty thousand, seven thirty-five.
To which department?
Um, that is, uh.
Sheriff, yeah, sheriff, okay, so that is for their
All their vehicles.
Uh, vehicles and law enforcement liability.
Okay.
Yep.
I just saw a pretty healthy one.
Yep.
Yeah, we had quite a few.
So there are various departments in this report that have vehicles that need to be insured.
This has to be one of the more expensive months we've had here for a while.
Our court-appointed attorneys, our juries, yeah, a lot. Absolutely. All right, I'm looking for a motion to approve.
Move that we pay the bills.
Motion by Gable.
Second.
Second by Johnson, any comments or questions? On favor, say aye.
Motion. Yeah, we did.
Yeah, just, yeah. On favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that motion carries. Item number fourteen, action to approve automatic budget supplements.
Uh, we have one today, and it is for the claims that we paid, uh, for the CARES Act, the ERA money. The total we paid in April is fifty-two thousand, two hundred and fifty-nine dollars and sixty-seven cents, and we can put that back into the market.
All right, yeah.
I'm sorry, Cindy, I, would you repeat that number again? I, you went too fast for me, I wasn't, my pen wasn't writing.
She was trying to do it all in one breath.
Uh, fifty-two thousand, two hundred and fifty-nine dollars and sixty-seven cents.
Thank you.
Make a motion to approve.
Motion by Van Dusen, second by Gable. Any other comments or questions, hearing none, on favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, that motion carries. Item number fifteen, action to approve personnel changes, we have a couple of them.
Two of those for today, they are seasonal employees for the memorial park, Steve Rondell is a seasonal park custodian to start April eleventh, step AA number one, fifteen ninety-six per hour, and Jeff Jensen, effective date April twelfth, same step, same hourly rate.
Both true.
Motion by Johnson, second by Gable, comments, questions, hearing none, on favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that motion carries, I don't see any travel requests. Um, item number seventeen, public notices, possible quorum of commissioners in attendance, we already noted, will be at consolidated and local board. Any other, oh, the nine-one-one open house, I don't know, you wanna go ahead and I'll let you segue into that, that's your deal.
Open house tonight from six until eight PM, so I guess we could have a quorum there, I don't know, no, it's tonight and tomorrow night both, so.
And also that.
They could feed us before the field meeting, so.
Yeah, it starts at, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, it goes from six to eight, so you're gonna have to go fast.
Yeah, sixteen, yes.
Consolidated boards are at six thirty, but we only have five. Um, also Peter, I don't know how to say, he is doing, I'll be attending that when we get done, um, a presentation tonight at the gas, so I don't know if any other ones are going to be at that. Um, interagency meeting possibly, could be a quorum of us at that.
Which, I'm sorry, which one?
Interagency.
Oh.
Other than that, I don't have anything. Does anyone else? All right, let's move on to old business then, does anyone have any old business? About new business? Anything for the open, I would just send out a reminder, the courthouse will be closed Friday and Monday in observance of the Easter uh, weekend, and also with that, I'd like to wish everyone a happy Easter, I guess.
Same deal.
Thank you. Uh, anyone else have anything for the open? Do we have a need for an executive session, all right?
Cool, back up, I got just a comment, I did attend the South Dakota Retirement Board Meeting this past week, and, uh, just so everybody can feel good that we will, and for sure, you will be getting your three-and-a-half percent pay increase July one, so that's, that's solid, the, the system is very still financially sound, but it's really taken a beating now, probably the toughest part is that eight, I heard this morning, now we're talking about an inflation rate of eight percent, so it keeps creeping up, we were, when we were dealing with numbers, Tuesday, we were looking at seven-two, so it's creeped up since last Tuesday already, so that inflation is, is hurting everybody, and, uh, uh, gas is probably the, or energy is one of the big, and everybody needs it, right, everybody needs energy, and food is right behind it, housing is right behind of that, so there are three things that really hit the whole general public, and, and so, uh, we'll be, the, the committee, the investment council, working hard to hold everything together, and just very, very lucky for the system that we were in, very, very good shape financially, so, uh, I, I, we'll be all right a year from now, but we probably will be looking at a lot less, uh, in, increases, that's for sure, but, uh, it's, it's doing well.
All right, with that, looking for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Motion by Van Dusen, second by Gable, on favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, we are adjourned.